Good evening. I'd like to call the April 12th, 2016 Longmont City Council Meeting to order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmember Bagley.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
And Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening, or at final call, public invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. So now we have the March 15th Regular Session. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move we approve the minutes for March 15th.
All right, that's been moved in second, and let's vote. That passes seven to zero. And we also have the March 29th Regular Session minutes to vote on. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move we approve the March 29th minutes.
Okay, I won't be voting because I wasn't here for the meeting, but the rest of you six can vote. And that passes six to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
Yes, Mayor Coombs, there's not actually a revision. What I wanted to just alert you to is that there was a corrected version of ordinance 2016-27 placed at your desk. It was in your Dropbox, and we put it up on the web. It just corrected the words "transportation fee to recreation buildings" impact fee in that ordinance.
Okay.
It was an oversight, so.
Thank you. Is there a report from the city manager?
No report, Mayor Council.
Okay, so now we've got some proclamations to. The first proclamation is a proclamation designating the month of April 2016 as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in Longmont. Tom Hubner, head of the Longmont Parkinson Support Group and board members are here to accept this proclamation. So I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation designating April 2016 as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in Longmont, Colorado, whereas Parkinson's disease is a progressive and degenerative neurological movement disorder that has unique impact on each patient, and whereas there are more than 1 million Americans diagnosed with Parkinson's disease, and an estimated 17,000 Coloradans are living with Parkinson's disease, and whereas the cause of this disease is unknown, the cure is not yet determined, and standard treatments do not stop the progression, and whereas increased education and research are needed to help find more effective treatments with fewer side effects, and ultimately a cure for Parkinson's disease, and whereas a multidisciplinary approach to Parkinson's disease care includes local wellness support and caregiving groups, and whereas it is important to recognize the effects of Parkinson's disease on citizens of our city and state, so that we may gain a better understanding of their needs and bring about greater hope for a cure. Now, therefore, I, Dennis L. Coombs, mayor, by the virtue of authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim April 2016 as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in Longmont, and I invite all citizens in the community to support those with Parkinson's disease in the hope that a cure will soon be found. So I don't know if you would like to come down and say anything before we... Sure.
The Longmont Parkinson Support Group would like to thank you, Mayor and the City Council, for giving us this time. We're really trying to make everybody aware of what Parkinson's is all about. We'd also like to thank Time's Call on Channel 8 for taking our message to the people of the surrounding area in Longmont. Cheryl Seifert, the Executive Director of the Parkinson's Association of the Rockies, for their continuing effort in supporting our group in Longmont. We also like to thank the national associations for the materials that they give to us, that we hand out at the farmer's market, and, most importantly, the millions of dollars that they give to research. We would like to thank also the Long speak United Methodist Church for making space available to our group. Our Longmont Support Group has over 100 people on our roster, and we distribute over 275 newsletters in eight states. Last meeting, we had 73 people attend, and four were new people, and six came from other cities to hear our speaker. Parkinson's disease has 60,000 new cases every year, is the second most common neurological disease in the United States after Alzheimer's. While I'm taking the time to tell you about this, people are being diagnosed every nine minutes. Today alone, 164 people, lives will change forever. Not only will the patient be affected, but so will be the care partner and all the members of their family. There are over 1.5 million people in the United States with Parkinson's, and this is probably low since the calculating of the count has not been very accurate. Two easy signals to look for are smell, the loss of smell, and small handwriting. It turns out in a lot of cases, these symptoms appear years before the other symptoms appear. When the symptoms start appearing, the person has lost 60 to 80 percent of the dopamine, which means it takes a long time to diagnose. You have it a long time before it's finally diagnosed. As we continue to live longer, Parkinson's is expected to increase significantly, doubling by 2013... or 2030, excuse me. 1.6 percent of the people of the age of 65 will be diagnosed with Parkinson's. Men are more likely by 1.5 times to have Parkinson's than women. The average medical cost associated with Parkinson's is $22,800 a year per person. The yearly cost is expected to double by 2040. Although Parkinson's is not fatal, complications from this disorder are the 14th leading cause of death in the United States, and there is no cure. We've had a lot of our members who volunteered to help with researchers from CU Medical School, doing all kinds of studies, trying to help them come up with the golden ring. Our goal for the Longmont Parkinson Support Group is to make as many people aware as possible and its implications on our community. We are the face of Parkinson's. Thank you for joining us and to help raise the awareness of Parkinson's. We appreciate your time. We'd like to have you stop by the farmer's market on the fourth Saturday of every month, and we'd love to talk to you about Parkinson's. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. So we now have a proclamation designating April... designating the month of April 2016 as Fair Housing Month in Longmont. Susan Spalding, Community Relations Specialist and Community and Neighborhood Resources is here to accept this proclamation. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. A proclamation designating the month of April 2016 as Fair Housing Month in Longmont, Colorado, whereas April 2016 marks the 48th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968, which affirms the right of every citizen to obtain housing of their choice regardless of race, color, sex, religion, national origin, disability, or family status, and whereas the state of Colorado law also affirms the right of every citizen to obtain housing of their choice regardless of race, color, creed, religion, sex, sexual orientation, national orientation, disability, marital status, or family status, and whereas these laws prohibit discrimination and harassment in all aspects of housing, including sales and rentals, eviction terms and conditions, mortgage loans, and insurance, land use and zoning, and are a vital part of ensuring Longmont is a welcoming and inclusive community where everyone can belong, and whereas we recognize the importance of fair housing, education, and the City of Longmont's effort to further fair housing for all. Now, therefore, I, Dennis L. Coombs, mayor, by the virtue of authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Fair Housing Month in Longmont, and invite all to be aware of this federal act that empowers all citizens. So thank you for being here, Susan. Would you like to make a few comments?
I would, Mayor. Mayor, City Council. On April 10th, 1959, 57 years ago, the Fair Housing Law of the Colorado Legislature was the first in the United States to prohibit discrimination in both public and private housing based on race, creed, color, national origin, or ancestry. On April 11th, 1968, 48 years ago, President Lyndon Johnson signed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which expanded on the 1964 Civil Rights Act and prohibited discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, religion, national origin, sex, and as amended, handicapped, and family status. Title VII of the 68 Act is also known as the Fair Housing Act, and was actually modeled on the Colorado Act. In 2004, Longmont's Division of Community and Neighborhood Resources was permanently established as a fair housing office. After the issue of fair housing was raised by a housing task force and the CBDG Division, our office has a working relationship with the Colorado Civil Rights Commission to take complaints and provide information and education around fair housing and predatory lending. In April 2007, Longmont's Community and Neighborhood Resources Office collaborated with HUD, the Colorado Civil Rights Office, and CDBG to host the first fair housing statewide conference in northern Colorado. Since 2011, in partnership with Officer Sarah Arnie of the Longmont Police Department, our office has hosted the monthly Longmont Landlord Training Alliance. Every April, to celebrate April as Fair Housing Month, we have presented a training to Longmont landlords on aspects of fair housing. Tomorrow evening, Frances McDonald of the Colorado Civil Rights Division will present on Fair Housing 101. Fair housing is Colorado's legacy, is Longmont's legacy, and is the law and legacy of the United States. Fair housing helps to create Longmont as a place where people are welcomed and residents and visitors, no matter their background, age, or ability. The spirit of accommodation is one of the best ways to create a stronger local economy. Accommodating is good business by building a wide base of loyal, long-term customers. When everyone in the community feels that they belong, then everyone takes pride and ownership in their role in community life. Fair housing isn't just the law, it's everyone's birthright.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation designating the week of April 10th through the 17th, 2016, as Community Food Share, Food Drive Week in Longmont. Michelle Orgi, Food Community Share Executive Director, is here to present... is present to accept this proclamation. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation designating the week of April 10th through the 17th, 2016, as Community Food Share, Food Drive Week in Longmont, Colorado, whereas hunger denies dignity, lessens human energy, erodes community and family stability, and impairs the potential of people and societies to achieve, and whereas Community Food Share exists to be a leader of our community's effort to end hunger in Boulder and Broomfield Counties, and whereas the Community Food Share distributed over 8.7 million pounds of nutritionist food in 2015, and over 3 million pounds of nutritionist food... 39 percent of the total food distributed by Community Food Share in 2015 were distributed in Longmont area through 15 partner agencies, through their own direct distribution programs, and whereas Longmont citizens are a very generous and compassionate community. And whereas Longmont citizens are a very generous and compassionate people with a long and strong history of supporting Community Food Share in its thirty-five years of service to our community. And whereas The Times Call is a sponsor of the twenty-eighth annual Hunger Hertz the Whole Community Food Drive in Longmont for Community Food Share from April tenth through April seventeenth, twenty sixteen. Now therefore, I Dennis Al Combs, Mayor by the virtue of authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of April tenth through the seventeenth, twenty sixteen, as Community Food Share Drive Week in Longmont, and I invite all citizens in the community to be aware of the special and vital services provided to the hungry in Longmont by Community Food Share and to donate food and dollars with generous spirit for those in need. So would you like to come down and say a few words? Thanks for being here again tonight.
Thank you. I have a short but deceivingly tricky last name. You almost got it. It's close as most people do. So thank you so much, Mayor and City Council, for your support of Community Food Share this week and every week of the year. Longmont, the Longmont community, the residents, the partner programs, the government, everybody has been very supportive of us, and we really appreciate that. With almost forty percent of our food going to Longmont, we're here to serve Boulder and Broomfield Counties, but very much so Longmont, and we appreciate the support, and we'll continue to serve and support Longmont. So thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Could you pronounce your last name for me? So I know what your next word is.
Orgay.
Okay. Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, next we have a proclamation designating the week of April tenth through the sixteenth, how come it's not the seventeenth, twenty sixteen, as the week of the young child in Longmont. Melina Kelsey, Community Coordinator, Early Childhood Education in the City's Children's, Youth, and Families Division. Sheila Blankenship, Early Childhood Coordinator and Child Find Facilitator. And Connie Seifert, Assistant Superintendent of Student Achievement with the St. Rain Valley School District, are all here to accept this proclamation. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation designating the week of April tenth through the sixteenth, twenty sixteen, as the week of the young child in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas the week of the young child is an annual celebration sponsored by the National Association for the Education of Young Children, of early learning, young children, their teachers, and families. And whereas today we know more than ever about the importance of children's earliest years in shaping their learning and development, ninety percent of a child's brain is developed by the age of five. By age three, children from poorer families are exposed to thirty million fewer words than children from wealthier families. This is important because vocabulary development during the preschool years is related to later reading skills and school success. And whereas this is the time to recognize that children's opportunities are our responsibility and to recommit ourselves to ensuring that every child experiences the type of early environment at home, at childcare, at school, and in the community that will promote their early learning. Now therefore, I Dennis Al Combs, Mayor by the virtue of authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of April tenth through the sixteenth, twenty sixteen, as week of the young child in Longmont, invite all residents to recognize the value of laying a foundation for success in children's early childhood years and to participate in this week's events. So if you'd like to come forward and say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council members. The week of the young child is a very small snippet of time to celebrate a child's early development in the first eight years of life. There are only one thousand days in a child's life to help prepare that child before their first day of kindergarten. The National Association for the Education of Young Children establishes this week as a week of the young child to help emphasize this important phase in our lives. We want to thank them for their work, as well as our local sectors, the Colorado Association for the Education of Young Children, and the Boulder County Association for the Education of Young Children. These local efforts improve the lives of children here in our city of Longmont. We'd also like to thank the City Council members for your support of early childhood efforts, and especially Mayor Combs for his time and support for the Mayor's Book Club programs specific for children in the early childhood phase and early child efforts throughout the city of Longmont. Sheila Blankenship is now going to talk a little bit about our event that is happening tomorrow.
Good evening. First of all, I just want to thank you so much for your partnership, for you, Mayor Combs, and then for all City Council members. Thank you for allowing us. You are a springboard, actually, of our week, as you see in our little flyer there. We have an event that's happening tomorrow. I also want to acknowledge Connie Seifert and Bob Smith as our Board President in St. Rain. And I have to tell you, both of these people are champions for early childhood education and really for education as a whole. You'll hear often words such as critical years or foundational years when it comes to early childhood, and we really believe in that because it does set that tone for children as they enter and continue on in their educational system. So our Week of the Young Child event, it's our second annual, and it is happening tomorrow afternoon from four-thirty to six-thirty at Mountain View Elementary. As you can see, we have several partners. We have about twenty-three individuals that will be there to kind of talk about and showcase early childhood. Each one of the vendors will have some form of activities for children to do. We have a young magician, which is really cool. He's thirteen years old. We've got some different activities happening throughout the afternoon, and it starts again from four-thirty to six-thirty. Some of our partnerships are the YMCA, Bright by Three, TLC Learning Center, Longmont Public Library, Salud, Aspen Center, Chick-fil-A will be there, and again, of course, Bride Days. And she has just also been a wonderful cheerleader for this event, and I can't thank Melanie enough for making this happen. So thank you very much.
Okay, now it's time for public invited to be heard, and the first person on the list is Moen Arink. So please come down and state your name and address. Moen, okay. And he will be followed by Ray Cooper.
City Council members, I'm your citizen. Question it. Love my people. And all nooks and the corners of this nation. I believe in it. I love it. I support it. I would live for it. This is a very, very unique nation in the entire planet. But I have a case to argue for. Why do we allow our vulnerable citizen to die just like that? I don't agree with it. I don't accept it. It's a pain in my emotions. Homeless, well, there are some that make wrong decisions. I'm not saying that all homeless people are, you know, there are people who made wrong decisions, but there are some who didn't. They just need to be uplifted at some point. There are some that who just give up. Okay, what do we do about that? That's a different story.
Well, thank you for coming tonight. Unfortunately, your three minutes is now...
My, my, three minutes is over or no?
Oh. Okay, I'm sorry. I just can't see that light. Okay, sorry.
So...
Just hold it.
There.
And so, and so, so I believe we have the capacity, the City Council has the capacity to do something. To say, oh, man, this is this, this is that, and we can explain and respect the laws and regulations and all of that. But we, I don't think it's a good idea that we just say, oh, man, if you're on the street, then you are on the streets. You are on your own, that kind of thing. People die for big causes, and we remember, I know, I'm a political science major. Abraham Lincoln died to liberate some race. We know that. So let's do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Cooper?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm happy to be here tonight. I have to say that I live, love, and support this city as well, but have a few different comments that I'd like to share.
Could you first give us your address, please?
Oh, sure. One thousand nine Box Elder Circle.
Thank you.
During a recent meeting, we were informed by the city staff as we were addressing the lease for Mile High, that there was a verbal trade-out agreement between the former airport manager, Tim Barth, and Mile High skydiving owner, Frank Caseras. Questions about why payments for the annual drop zone permit fee were not made for a number of years were dismissed as having been traded in a verbal agreement for airport mowing services and other services. This presumed trade-out agreement involved Mr. Caseras providing mowing and snow removal services in lieu of the annual drop zone permit fee. However, our examination, my examination of city records, and I have some data here, shows otherwise. This is our understanding of the facts. Mile High Skydiving did not pay the annual permit fee of seventy-five hundred dollars per year required by the Longmont Ordinance between two thousand and seven and two thousand and fifteen, in addition to not paying for the South Parcel lease. Mile High Airport Services was incorporated by Frank Caseras in two thousand and six and was paid several thousand dollars per year for their services. Their contract rate is sixty dollars per hour, and for example, in two thousand and eleven, they were paid twelve thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars for services, mowing services. And in two thousand and twelve, they were paid thirteen thousand one hundred dollars. A typical mowing invoice dated June first, two thousand and twelve, billed nearly three thousand dollars and covered mowing services for a little over a month. So questions come to mind. Was Mile High being paid to mow airport property that they were using for free, including both the South Parcel and the Drop Zone areas? Clearly, the claim of trade-out agreement is not supported by the evidence from the invoices. Given this evidence, there are questions that come to mind. At best, would this be considered double-dipping? Or at worst, was there some intended deception that could be considered fraud? Why did Tim Barth provide incoherent explanations about why Mile High didn't have to pay the permit fee even though it's required? We're requesting your help to investigate these questions, and would like to follow-up timeline within a week, and we're prepared to communicate with the district attorney to seek their assistance if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Locke?
My name's Stephen Locke. My address is one-one-one four Wilshire Drive. And I am here as a consultant for the owner of a property at ninety-eight hundred north one hundred and nineteenth street in Longmont. It's actually not in the city limits, it's just outside. And the property is directly south of Highway one nineteen and across the street from the city's St. Rain Greenway, trails and open space, give you an idea of where it's located. It's approximately seven point seven acres, and the St. Rain Creek runs along the entire south side of the property. We have just received approval on the change of use for the property from Boulder County, and it will become a marijuana grow facility. And the septic and well on the property are failing, so we are petitioning the City Council to direct city planners to look into the possibility of us accessing city sewer and water pursuant to Code fourteen point zero nine point zero two, Section A one and A two. And the owners would also agree to provision fourteen point zero nine point zero two zero, Section C one, calling for the annexation of the property if and when the use becomes approved by the City of Longmont. And the owners feel that the environment would benefit greatly from eliminating a proposed septic system on that property that would be in close proximity to the St. Rain Creek. And they also wanted me to make you aware that the only sanitary waste from an employee restroom would enter the sewer system as the grow operation will not produce any industrial waste. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kimberly Gibbs?
Good evening, Mayor Combs, members of council. I would also like to comment about Mile High Skydiving and the annual permit fee that wasn't paid. Mr. Cooper referred to the Longmont Ordinance that specifies the permit fee. That is Ordinance four dot six four dot zero four zero. And it's pretty clear, this is titled Public Use Areas Permits and Fees. It reads, "The airport manager may designate areas at the airport for use by the public, including but not limited to skydive operators, skydivers, ultralight aircraft, and so on, and other uses deemed reasonable by the airport manager and consistent with general aviation operations." And then it goes on to specify that annual permit fee of seventy-five hundred dollars. That ordinance was adopted in two thousand and seven, and of course, as we know now, Mile High didn't pay for the drop zone from June of nineteen ninety-nine. for the drop zone from June of 1999 until 2015. So the ordinance is pretty clear. I mean, it's very clear, it's not ambiguous at all. I had made several requests for information over the years about Mile High's payments, as you know. And in response to one of my requests about the annual permit fee in particular, this was in July 2014, Tim Barth responded via a staff member when I asked why they weren't paying that, of course, in addition to not paying that $42,000 annual lease payment for the South parcel. In regard to, the response was, "In regard to Municipal Code Section blah blah, that provision of the code has not been applied as there are no competing interests in the undevelopable land on the south side of the airport." It begs the question, first of all, it's nonsensical. It's untrue, and it leads to just a lot of questions. The code has not been applied as there are no competing interests in the undevelopable land on the south side of the airport. At a minimum, I, I think this warrants further investigation. I have some pretty old-fashioned ideas about public servants. I believe they should serve the public. They should promote the common good, and they should be accountable. I mean, these are all just really simple, simple ideas, and perhaps that's just one reason why these things bother me. So we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That ends first call, publicly invited to be heard.
Do you guys want, can I take 30 seconds to explain something that we heard from the consultant? And I'll forget, it's only if I wait till council comments, I'll, I'll forget. The, the, the property, the person who actually owns the property is a client of mine, just so you know. And that, and when I heard him talking, I'm like, oh, I know what he's talking about. There's the grow facility. And so I spoke with Dale Roddamer, and unless, the ordinance, what he didn't mention is the ordinances state that unless the septic tank is truly failing, and unless the, well, let me put it this way, there's some criteria that, the ordinance says unless certain criteria are met, city staff cannot even entertain the possibility. And so what the consultant was doing, I think, was trying to get counsel just to say, city staff, talk with these people and figure out what's going on, because they're not allowed to talk to them unless, unless the septic's failing, truly failing. Is that right, Dale? So I'll bring this up later, but somebody remind me, because I, I think what he's asking for is at least four of us to say, go talk to them and come, bring it back and tell us what's going on. Because they can't annex into the city currently because we don't allow grows or marijuana establishments.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, and I'll, I'll remind you, Councilmember Bagley, but before we make any decisions tonight, I think we need to understand exactly from our staff, exactly what they're proposing instead of...
They can't talk to you?
No, that's not what I'm saying. The staff can talk to us first, so then, at a, perhaps at a different meeting, then we, that we can have an educated decision, to make an educated decision to say, yes, go talk to them, or no, don't go talk to them.
Okay. Now we'll continue to, our consent agenda.
Mayor Coombs, the first item on your consent agenda is 8A, Ordinance 2016-21, an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for April 26. Item 8B is Ordinance 2016-22, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the river annexation, which is generally located east of Sunset Street and north of Boston Avenue, and zoning the property P for public. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for April 26. Item 8C is Ordinance 2016-23, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of 100 square foot and 80 square foot electrical easements on Lot 1, Wallace Edition 4 filing, Replat J, generally located east of Ionosphere Street and north of Neon Forest Circle. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for April 26. Item 8D is Ordinance 2016-24, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of a 111.12 square foot portion of a utility easement on Lot 5, Block 1 of the Garden Greens Commercial Subdivision, generally located at 2025 Main Street, that's on the west side of Main Street, north of 20th Avenue. And public hearing and second reading is scheduled for April 26. Item 8E is Ordinance 2016-25, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of the south 15 feet of a 30-foot wide easement and utility easement on Lot 4, Block 1, North Ridge Community Center Subdivision, that's generally located east of Main Street and north of Crissman Drive. This, public hearing and second reading is scheduled for April 26. Item 8F, the, has two items on it. The first one is Ordinance 2016-26, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapters 14.38, 15.02, and 15.10 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding the transportation impact fee, and Ordinance 2016-27, which is an ordinance amending Chapter 14.46 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding the recreation buildings impact fee. Both of these ordinance are scheduled for public hearings on April 26. Item 8G is Ordinance 2016-28, a bill for an administrative ordinance approving the conveyance of a parcel of city-owned land to the Andrea Pierce Bigelow Living Trust, generally located south of Sandstone Ranch. Public hearing is scheduled for April 26. Item 8H is Resolution 2016-39, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the town of Jamestown for CDBGDR funding for flood recovery. Item 8I is Resolution 2016-40, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for a lease of the Boulder County Fairgrounds parking lot for Rhythm on the River. And Item 8J is a Resolution 2016-41, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for the lease of the Boulder County Fairgrounds Park for the Longmont 4th of July fireworks. And staff has, does not need to pull any items from consent.
Councilmember Moore?
Can I move the consent agenda?
All right. I'd second that. Councilmember Finley?
Could I pull?
Sure.
F, please?
All right, so Jeff then has moved the, our, Councilmember Moore has moved the consent agenda minus F. All right, let's vote on that. And that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, the first item on your second reading is Ordinance 2016-13, a bill for an administrative ordinance approving the Willow River Properties LLC contract to buy and sell real estate for the conveyance of 103 Main Street to Willow River Properties LLC. And there is no formal staff presentation on this tonight. You had a discussion on first reading.
Okay. Would anybody like to move this ordinance? Oh, excuse me. I will now open the public hearing on Ordinance 2016, that's 13. I guess when you're gone for two weeks. And we have Sharon O'Leary is here to speak on that, and she'll be followed by Bob Carlson
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Councilmembers. I'm here tonight, Sharon O'Leary, 534 Emery Street. I'm here tonight to address the sale of any publicly owned building to a private or non-governmental entity, specifically tonight, the landmarked Old Electrical Building. The present lease agreement with the Cheese Importers does not expire until 2017, so what is the rush to sell? According to the lease agreement, it can be renewed for two more five-year agreements, totaling 10-year more rental. By continuing to lease from the city, the current owners will be eligible for additional local and state historical funding. The city could apply for a state assessment grant as well as other improvement grants for the property. At $5.64 per square foot, the present renter has an excellent deal. In the assessment of the Old Electrical Building, it has inaccurately been labeled surplus. How can a fully paid for building be surplus? As we near build up, we have, as we near build out, this becomes even more important. We have successfully repurposed building, other city buildings for the citizens of Longmont benefits. We should not decrease our inventory. Two buildings I think of right away would be the Carnegie Library and the old planning building, which now it hosts Tinker Mill, and now it works with the library and city recreational services to benefit the citizens of Longmont. Presently, downtown Longmont is in the process of applying for a national historic district, and this building supports that effort. Preservation of historic downtown statistically show a positive impact on the local economy through increased property values, encouraging better property designs, and increased tourism. If despite all these points, council feels it's in the best interest of its citizens to sell the Old Electric Building to a private business, then do it with a conservation easement on the deed, so the building can never be torn down with future development pressures. Protect this tangible investment of your Longmont citizens. If a private downtown designated building wants to remove their designation in the future, it's their choice. But the sale of a publicly owned building, designated building must be protected. Historical neighborhoods are lost, one building at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Mayor Coombs, Council, I'm Bob Carlson, 501 Emery Street. To echo what Sharon just, just said, with the downtown pursuing a designation as a national historic district, the question arises to, as to why the city would rid itself of what could be, or what could serve as a key element toward reaching that designation. Why should the city sell a perfectly good, historically designated, citizen-owned building and decrease the inventory? The sale of public-owned buildings should not be allowed without the vote of the owners, the Longmont citizens. The question of selling old, of the Old Electric Building deserves to be put out to a vote of people. What's the hurry of this, for selling this? Remember, historic neighborhoods are saved, one building at a time. Thank you for your...
Thank you. And Sarah Levison?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Council. My name's Sarah Levison, 634 Emery Street. I have a whole different take on this issue, a creative take, that involves money, and involves getting the repairs for this historic building done without too many city funds. And the source of this would be the State Historical Fund. The State Historical Fund was the source of a significant amount of matching grant for the city when we rehabilitated this building for the museum archive. And my suggestion is that we delay the sale of this property right now so that some of these details and financial leveraging opportunities could be explored. First of all, it is much easier for a city to get the funds to rehabilitate a building than a for-profit entity. And I will call everybody's attention to the current situation of the Old Johnson's Corners Gas Station building on the prospect property. Kiki Wallace has been trying to get State Historical Fund money for that building and the rehabilitation for years, and it has gone almost nowhere. So I think that we can look at things in a different timeline. I have talked to the applicants and proposed this idea. I understand it's, it's very much 11th hour, but this is the public hearing. First, I would ask the city to delay the sale of the building. Second, that the city could apply for the grant to do the building assessment to the State Historical Fund. The next round of these grant applications is December 1. Then finding out what the necessary repairs are for the building will give a great advantage to the person buying it. We will know the condition of the foundation, we will know the true cost of the repairs for the next 10 years, and the city is likely to get that rehabilitation assessment grant. Two, the other part of it is that the city could then apply for rehabilitation grant to do those expensive repairs and not place that burden of possibly 3, 4, $500,000 on a small business owner. And the state is likely to grant the rehabilitation grant for the city more than a private owner. And then the third thing is, with the city's support, after those expensive items are taken care of, and we know what the building assessment is, then perhaps the city could support the Cheese Importers in an acquisition grant from the State Historical Fund. There is a nonprofit entity that I wrote a letter for two years ago, they were able to obtain $185,000 to buy a landmark property, albeit it was a nonprofit, but there is money out there, and I think there could be a very strong case made for the Cheese Importers to be eligible for an acquisition grant. So, you know, I'm asking maybe to delay the sale and see if we can't explore a win-win financially for both parties. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Sarah, can I ask you a question? I'm not allowed? Okay. I'm wondering if we should run this past the Cheese Importers to see what they think of this? We're just hearing one side. Has this been proposed to them? Is it worth delaying to have that conversation?
Well, I think she's here.
Are you here?
Be appropriate, yes.
There you are. What do you, come up and tell us what you think. Don't want to make a decision without your input.
Hi, my name is Lyman White, 237 Brass Street here in Longmont. This hadn't been proposed to us, per se, exactly how Sarah brought it up.
Yeah, lift the mic up so we can all hear.
And here with Clara. We are comfortable moving forward with the program as set forth in the contract.
Yeah, we know that we can also apply for state grants. There are some that we wouldn't qualify for, but I think we've all come this far together, and that's what we're going to do next, is work on the historical grants and see what we can do to improve even more of the beautiful building that we've put all our heart and soul into.
Okay, I just wanted to hear your input about this proposal. Thank you.
It's hard not knowing and being at the very last...
It is.
...and not knowing whether it would be really beneficial or not, and how long would it take, and really, I mean, looking out for ourselves, but how would it really benefit, I'm trying to think of how it would really benefit the city greatly as well.
Right. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move Ordinance 2016-13.
Kate's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I know I'm in the vast minority here. Do we know how much the roof's going to cost to fix? Have we gotten a quote on that? No, but who, have we gotten a quote on that? I know we've said, we've, I've heard 500,000, I've heard 200,000. Have we gotten a quote on the roof?
I had David Stern, redevelopment manager of the city. So working with building facilities, you know, we'd have to do a full assessment, is what they indicated to determine what the future improvement costs were. They tentatively estimated, I think, between 200 and 300,000 within a five-year period, all improvements, all inclusive, yeah.
So tentatively, but has anyone gone up, looked at the roof, and done an assessment? The answer's no, correct?
No.
Okay. Has anyone, so how much is it going to cost to build a new facility to store our museum info, stuff? Have we gotten a quote, RFP, anything like that?
Um, we, Karen's here, she can talk about that. We have received quotes on, or estimates on that.
Hello, Karen.
Karen Roni, Community Services Director, Mayor and Council, and Mayor Potam Bagley. Actually, we are in the, the process of working with an architect that is, that within the next month, we will have the estimate on what it would cost. on what it would cost, I mean, basically, an estimate on what it would cost to build the...
But we don't know now, right?
We, we will know for sure in about a month.
Okay, so we don't know now?
They're working on it.
Yeah. So, do we have a right of first refusal? What's preventing them from selling the building in 12 months? Do we have one of those in the contract? Mr. Eugene, Mr. May?
Eugene May, City Attorney, no.
No, okay. So I'm just pointing out, staff and council are giving away a building. We don't know the facts. I'm strongly against this. I mean, like I said, I'm happy that you've got six votes on council. This makes bad business sense. It's a lazy decision, and I'm going to vote against it. Because we're making, we're just giving away city property just because we like the cheese importers.
Councilmember Peck?
I would prefer, or ask that you put a right of first refusal in that contract. I think that the owners have been, or the renters have been approached with that and are okay with it. So, can we do that?
Mayor and council, council can do what it wishes.
Do we, do we need an approval on that or a consensus?
Yeah, we'd have to amend.
I move that we put a first right of refusal in the contract with the Willow River LLC for the purchase of the building.
Okay. I'll second that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
I would like to read, just for the record, that this is not a lazy decision. This is, this is, was a letter that we received from Kimberly McKee, who's head of the, the director of the Downtown Development Authority. And I would like to read this just so it's part of the public record. The investment, and this is why she's supporting this without any conditions. Their investment came at a critical point in the extremely underutilized southern gateway of downtown. It jump-started the first and main project, investing in a part of the city that city council had previously determined as a priority. It took a historical building that was falling into disrepair and turned it into an economic generator for the city and downtown. It was a key factor in our success of becoming one of the fully certified Colorado creative districts. It continues to bring a wow factor to downtown for residents and visitors. By removing this building from city ownership, it will fully bring it back on the property tax rolls. It provides community and cultural programming, and that vision and goal will only continue to grow. At the time they made that White River, made this, Willow River, made this investment in downtown, not many others were doing so. They took a big risk, and that effort has helped spark and accelerate other investments in downtown. The investment transformed one of the most significant buildings in our city from an inaccessible storage facility to one that welcomes nearly 100,000 peoples per year from Colorado and beyond. I wanted to show my support and appreciation of the investment and risk these local business owners have made and their commitment to continue to invest in our community in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for reading that. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, Councilmember Christensen, I agree with you as well. This is not a lazy decision, because we've had at least three or four meetings on this particular topic. It's just a decision that certain members of council, maybe a certain member of council does not like or does not see as a good business decision. I am not aware if the, if you guys would be willing to accept the first right of refusal if you decided to sell. So, I'm just seeing nods of heads, so. This is the first, first, again, I hate making decisions, changing things on the fly at second reading. That's why we have, we've had a first reading on this a while back. Then we had a study session on this. Then we had another first reading on this, and now we're here at second reading. Well, Councilmember Peck, you haven't been here long enough. So doesn't really work sometimes trying to figure out language and putting it in a legal contract. Having brought this up prior would have been a little bit more prudent. I would not have a problem adding that language. But, again, to say this is a lazy decision, I take exception with, since we have done quite a bit of work on this. We're not going back and putting the museum or the police archives back into that building. The cheese importers is there. We know that we have to vacate the current storage situation due to the, wherever we have it, the lease is running out. We have to, and eventually, build a facility to house not only the museum archives, but I would think city clerk archives and police archives and what other, other archives that we potentially need. There could be a facility that is maybe a little bit larger than the one that we're looking for for police and museum. I'm just saying that we, we've been through this. We've gone through this. We've heard public comment that we're, I don't see it as giving away a public building, as the cheese importers have put in quite a bit of money into this facility already. We're not only talking about the roof, we're talking about the HVAC that potentially will have to be done on it, and the operation, the O and M on this, this building yearly. That's on us, as the landlord. So I'm just pointing this out, that it's not a lazy decision. This is one that we have been working on for quite some time.
So I guess my question to Eugene, is it hard at this late date to add a sentence or two to the contract to give us first right of refusal? I mean, basically, a first right of refusal says that if they find another buyer, they have to come to us and offer us the same price first.
That's correct, Mayor Eugene May, City Attorney. So we got wind of a potential for a request for a first right of refusal. Late this afternoon, my office was able to draft some language, and so we can get that up on the big screen. Certainly, I agree with parts of what Councilmember Santos said, that amending on the fly is not a great idea. And so I do have some language that council and the public can look at. And just procedurally, also, we, I believe we had a motion and a second, and so that the motion afterwards would be a motion to amend that first motion, not just the motion over the top.
So I guess, Councilmember Bagley?
It does take a bit more than just a few sentences.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My, my point in making a stink is not because I don't want to sell the building to the cheese importers. That's not my point. My point is, when it was first brought to council, we didn't have the data, and we're making a decision, still not knowing the data. For example, another question, how much will, how much property taxes will this building, once it goes back on the property tax rolls, can we expect to get as a city? Do we know?
Pretty darn close.
Okay, but do you have documentation? I mean, I know that's what you think, but my point is that next month is when we get the answer to a lot of these questions. I'm just saying it feels rushed. I feel spidey sense. I mean, Kimberly McKee, everybody likes cheese importers. Everyone, myself included. So when someone comes and says, hey, can we buy the building? Our natural inclination is to go, sure, why not? And I just want, I just, when I say lazy, maybe a better, maybe a more, a more appropriate way to phrase it is, I feel that staff and council are rushing this decision, and we're at second reading, making a decision without having the data. That's all I'm saying. And it was presented by city council or city staff that we want to do it for economic reasons. We've got to replace the roof. We're responsible for the foundation. We've got to go ahead and put the archives somewhere else. There's no numbers. It's an emotional decision, and I just want to make sure that we're all aware that it's an emotional decision. I would probably vote yes if I had the data, but I don't have the data. So let's vote.
Okay, so to clarify, we've got a motion that was made before the amended.
I did not get the...
So we've got a first vote on the amendment first, right?
No, I did not get the motion on passing the ordinance. So all I have is a motion to change the contract language.
I made the motion after Councilmember Peck's first spoke. I made the motion.
I missed that, I'm sorry.
I made the motion and it was seconded by Councilmember Finley.
And then Councilmember Peck made a motion to amend, and I seconded that motion. Okay. Yeah.
Mayor, before council starts action on the different motions, if I could just walk through the language that we've drafted. So in concept, it is exactly what you were saying. These would be amending the contract to add a new paragraph in the last paragraph of the contract, which is additional provisions. It creates a first right of refusal within a 10-year period of the closing date. So it's a 10-year window. If the purchaser wants to sell the property, that the city would have this right of first refusal. That would be paragraph 21-2, or point 2.1. 21-2.2 provides the 30-day notice to the city that it has a bona fide offer, and the city then has 30 days to match. City manager can exercise the city's right to purchase that is contingent upon council approval of a contract. And that's what's set forth in paragraph 21.2.3. And the two contingencies are if the city does not exercise its right of first refusal within that 30 days, or if council does not approve the contract, the right of first refusal is extinguished, and then they can move forward with a sale to the bona fide purchaser, third-party bona fide purchaser. So that's an explanation of the proposed or drafted language that would be amended into the contract.
Okay. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to say that, for me, having all of these first, second readings is that you have time to think about what you're doing. And if something comes up, like the right of first refusal, after listening to the other side, that, that gives me the right to make that amendment. So that's why I did it. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
Well, I'd just like to reiterate that this is not really an emotional decision. We have extensive appraisal of this building. We have city staff's estimate of how much it will cost in operating and management for the, for the roof, for the foundation, as Councilwoman Santos said, for the HVAC. For, you know, these are, of course, these are estimates, but, you know, we're not doing this right now. Nobody's doing this. You can't give somebody an estimate until it's time to actually do the thing, because otherwise it won't hold. It's only good for 30 days. So there's no point in getting somebody to do an estimate on something before it's ready to do it. And I think we have ample information. I don't, I think we have the numbers. I don't think that there is, that this is an emotional decision at all. I think it makes sense.
Well, I kind of believe the estimates are not that far off, because I know in 1995, we put a roof on the Pump House building, and it cost $65,000, I think, at that time, and $95,000. So that could easily be, you know, $180,000 today. So $200,000 is probably not that far off for a roof, so. All right, so I guess it's time now to vote on the amendment. That passes seven to zero. And now we'll vote on the ordinance. And that passes six to one with Councilmember Bagley descending.
Okay, your next item is ordinance 2016-19, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the following parcels of real property at the Vanspring Municipal Airport. H15 to Hanger H15 LLC, H41 to Dode and Gale Shipper, H17A to Keith Griffin, Griffith, I'm sorry, H18A to Gary B. Townsend, H19 to Gary Brinkhop and Carol A. Brinkhop, H20 to Scott and Leslie Westfall, H22 to Horizon Flying Club LLC, H23 to Horizon Flying Club LLC, and H25 to Peter Langerman and Stephen T. Croft. And we do not have a staff presentation on this.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 2016-19. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? I guess seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move ordinance 2016-19.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Your next item is ordinance 2016-20, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the rezoning of Harvest Junction North, Replat B., Block 2, Lot 1, generally located north of East Camprat Boulevard and east of Martin Street, removing certain additional use restrictions from the property's planned unit development, commercial zoning. And we do not have a staff presentation planned for this one.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 2016-20. Is there anybody from the, I think we do have Harvey Yocum has... You're going to pass? All right. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move ordinance 2016-20.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Oh, Councilmember Finley, or, excuse me, Christensen. I'm sorry.
I know, we're both wearing purple. You know, last week, I, I expressed discomfort in voting for this, but I voted for it anyway. And everyone I've spoken with this week has said, what are you people doing? And I still feel the same discomfort at voting against what staff recommendation was. I know I'm in the minority here. I, I think that the Hilton is wonderful. I think it'd be wonderful to have them here. But I also think that we have only got one sewer facility, one wastewater facility, sorry, and that's where it is. And I just, I see us as setting ourselves up for trouble, and I just can't in good conscience vote for this, but thank you.
All right. Councilmember Peck?
I'm going to voice some of the concerns that Councilwoman Christensen had. There are too many, there are too many issues with this that the staff is not on board with. The review criteria hasn't been met for 1502-05085, A, B, and C, and the common review standards are in conflict with LUD 2.1 and LUD .21E. After I reread it for about the third time, I'm just really uncomfortable with it. I also would like to know, and you've probably told me this, but again, is this in the floodplain? Not at all? Okay. I just have real concerns about, in the future, this hotel wanting us to move that water treatment plant. I don't know if they will or not, but they just don't meet the criteria that the staff recommends. So I'm, I'm not going to vote for it either.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, in case they would want the city to move this plant, it'd have to come to council, and so council could say yea or nay. I would think since it's there, it'd be a nay. But again, it's kind of like the last topic. We pretty much beat this dead horse. Just find it interesting that, what a difference a week makes.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I have the thought, first of all, when I go down there to Best Buy, I've been there three or four times this week, getting computers and picking up my Star Wars DVD. And as I'm walking in, the first thing I do is go, you know, take a, I mean, I've, I've been... hypersensitive to the smell. I've not, I can't smell anything over there during business hours. And I'm a little surprised, and the other thing is, after we had our, two weeks ago, after we had the conversation, it's surprising that if any other facility were coming into town, saying, "I'm going to build a four-star hotel," you know, we'd be like, "Oh, please, come, come." So it's a little bit of a Twilight Zone situation, where we're saying, "You sure? You want to build your four-star hotel here? Are you sure? I'm glad you're coming, and I think it's going to be a great facility, and I think it's going to be a problem that will be yours, should it present itself as a problem." And looking forward to the free market, working all that out. So I'll be voting for it.
Okay. Let's vote.
Hurry, Gabe. Run, run, Gabe.
I have to vote? Which way?
And that passes five to two with Councilmember Christensen and Peck descending. Why don't we take a five-minute break before we, well, no, let's finish the consent agenda. We pulled one item off that, so we need to.
Mayor Coombs, the item that you pulled off, just a minute, is item F, which, let me get to it. Are the two ordinances on the impact fee revisions? And Joni is here to answer your questions.
Okay, so Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Get back to my place here. I can do it quickly. Basically, I keep reading the study, and I keep looking at this, and when I add up the fees, it looks like we're increasing impact fees by 492%. But I know that just can't be right. So I'm asking you to correct my math.
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Finley, so I'm not calculating, using your calculator, but I did some quick math based on what is in the current ordinances for these two particular fees, with the elimination of the public building fee.
Okay, now, that's the one that I can't find on my list.
So that one is one that we had recommended for discontinuance, and we are standing firm with our recommendation that we discontinue that fee.
Is that in our ordinance that we're voting on?
It is. There is a, the unit says we're rescinding that.
Is that the PBCIF?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. So we're only increasing impact fees by 200%?
So when I take a look just at the transportation fee and rec fee that we're increasing, on an average single-family house, I'm getting 32% increase, and on a multifamily, 30% increase.
But then you add the recreation fee on top?
That's with the recreation fee.
And the transportation fee?
Correct, and that's an average. And keep in mind with these fees, we're doing it by household size, which is a much more equitable way. So that's kind of the average, if I try to make that comparison to our single-family, multifamily today.
Right. So for a 1,650-square-foot house, the fee is currently $485 or something like that?
$448.
And now it will be $1,585? According to the study, according to the little chart in the study. So that is a difference of $1,137. And in addition to that, we have the recreation impact fee, which would be for a 1,650-square-foot house, $1,067, which is a total of $2,204. Is that correct?
Sure. Yeah, I'm in a, yeah. I mean, so right now, keep in mind, we only have two fees. You're either single-family or multifamily, and that's based on if you're a detached single-family, everything else gets the multifamily rate. So kind of the breakdown in the study is trying to compare the square footage. The average square foot of a single-family home in Longmont ranges closer to about 3,200 square feet, is what our average is.
Okay.
So we have very few 1,600-square-foot houses.
I just, it just, when we're trying, you know, we talk so much about workforce housing, and workforce housing, you know, before, I don't see how a builder could even build workforce housing with our fees. I just, that bothers me a lot. Our fees on a house are over $30,000 before they buy the land, before they buy a stick of lumber, and I don't know how we're ever going to get workforce housing when our fees are so high. I understand the, I understand how we came up with those numbers. I don't disagree that that could be an impact fee, but I think our fees are just really high, so it bothers me, and I just wanted to check on my math. So that's the reason I pulled it.
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Finley, all fair game questions, certainly. One thing you will notice, I believe it's in probably section 14.38 of these, I might be off on my numbering, we did include the Affordable Housing waiver that's allowed by state statute. So for projects that meet a defined low-income housing definition, which currently in our code is set at 50% AMI or less, which you could change, if you would like to change that definition, you would be able to then waive some of these fees. So in the event that council determined you'd rather have that be a 60% AMI or less to waive certain fees, we can certainly take a look at that. Sean will be bringing forward some of our incentives that these impact fees have changed, and we plan on including that conversation, along with your housing incentive conversation that you'll be having again here in a few weeks, to try to wrap that all together.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So we're just, so these would increase, basically the fees would go to recreation facilities, arterial roadways, and intersections. Nothing else?
Correct.
If we vote no, how does that change things for the city?
Mayor Coombs and Councilwoman Bagley, if you vote no on these ordinances, the current ordinances would remain in place. Those current ordinances are not in keeping with current state statute, so I think we would talk to the city attorney's office and figure out what our next plan would be to reevaluate again.
And so what, so with that, what does the state statute require that we do? Increase our fees?
Mayor and council Eugene May. So the state statute has certain criteria that impact fees must meet. We could still meet those. It doesn't mandate any level of fee. The fee doesn't have to cover the entire capital improvements due to growth. So you could have a smaller fee and cover less portion of those capital improvements needed to meet growth.
So these fees are only to cover recreation, arterial roadways, and intersections for growth that will occur as a result of these single and multifamily units?
Right. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And to give you an example, and I want to go into this into some detail, we had the public building fee, but we realized there were certain things that were being programmed in that, that we could use the public building fee for. So by the time we said, "Okay, here's what we could use it for," if you remembered, it was a very small amount. And council said, "Sounds like it's going to be a lot of work for a small amount of money." And that's when we went back and reviewed it and said, "Yeah, we agree. This is not a fee that we want to continue."
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Eugene, I just have a clarification question. Since this was a consent agenda item, and normally with consent agenda items, if it's just 8F, we can move 8F. Is this the case, or do we need to take two separate votes?
You could go either way if there's.
I move 8F.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. When this comes back for our second reading, if we could have, it would be helpful for me, if we could have a real-life example of what the fees are before we change it, and what the fees are after we change it, so we can see the net of it, that would be helpful for me. And also, it just seemed to me, and I read this like three times, that that study said, "Here is the maximum amount we could possibly charge for impact fees," and that's what we did. And I just, that just bothers me. So anyway, if we could have that comparison, that would be great.
That's good data. It's not rushing things.
Okay. We've got a motion. It's been seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Okay, now let's take a five-minute break.
We've only got one thing left.
...
It's an itinerant vending and temporary uses discussion, and Joni will lead this off, but I don't do that.
Okay, okay.
I'm not calling.
All right, let's really quiet down, so Joni can...
Mayor Coombs, Members of Council, Joni Marsh, Planning and Development Services. So, this evening, I just wanted to bring back to you an item that had been requested last year with regard to both mobile vending, but really what I think would be more classified as itinerant vending and temporary uses. So, staff has done some initial review and some additional conversations with adjoining communities, other staff, taking a look at some best practices, simply to get an idea of, you know, how far off the mark is our code compared to other cities' code? How are other folks treating mobile vending? I also included in your packet a comparison chart to kind of show you what some of the Colorado communities are doing. As you can see, most of them are actually treating a lot of the itinerant businesses really as a temporary use, and I think that's certainly one option that we will be able to take a look at. I think one thing to think about that is if someone is doing this as a day-in, day-out job as their livelihood, a temporary use really is indicative of a temporary use, not a permanent job, which I think some of the itinerant vending ordinances we've taken a look at really probably give that kind of a person more security than they have a license to do business day in and day out, year-round. So, that's why we bring up itinerant vending in addition to this. A lot of Colorado communities actually don't have a specific itinerant vending ordinance. They're kind of doing it ad hoc, as is in this chart. So, it's certainly something we can take a look at. What we're really hoping to get from you this evening are a few things, seeking general direction on pursuing something around mobile vending, and also getting some, basically having a discussion and getting some feedback on things like location, duration, and separation from other businesses. I think many of you were on council when we did the mobile food vending, and I included a copy of that application in your packet that kind of shows you how that's a pretty straightforward, someone knows what they need to do, what they need to turn in, how they get permission from a property owner to do that. And that really falls as another category into our temporary use, but we actually created something that was very specific for it. So, that would be another option to consider. We did have separation standards originally in the mobile food vending, and as council might recall, we removed that restriction that it absolutely could not be within 250 feet. If someone went and got a letter, they could then be within a certain distance. So, you know, I think there are several factors that we'd just like to get some feedback on. Our intent after this would be, we have hired a consultant who will be taking a look at the land development code, specific sections, but overall, also to implement Invision Longmont and update the code to that. We currently have a lot of uses, I think, in our involving economic development environment that our code doesn't address well, and we'd like to make sure that we're on the cusp of being on the front lines of that. So, we have a lot of updates that we're going to do, and you'll start seeing some of those here in the, hopefully by the end of summer coming forward to you. I know we've talked about VRBO as well, so that's another one that's on our docket. Our sign code, based on a current Supreme Court decision, needs some evaluation as well. So, that's, those are some things that are first up on the docket, but this is certainly in the hopper. So, I'd be just happy to either answer questions or take some feedback, what council might think in terms of us pursuing this as a code update. I know you asked for us to bring back some information, but maybe some very specific direction around, are you good with us exploring all the avenues that we've proposed this evening, or is there a specific one, temp use or itinerant vending, that sounds better to you? Or would you like us to look at everything in more depth? And then talk a little bit about location. So, private property, public property, do we want to do this just in commercial areas, which, as you can see from the temp use chart, is typically where we're seeing it allowed, not typically in residential? We do allow one form of mobile vending in residential, which is our ice cream vendors. So, we do have a separate process for them as well. And then also the duration, time limits, time periods, does a temporary use that's 360 days a year make sense? Should there be other limits? And then, should there be separation? Are you interested in seeing opportunities for vendors in front of other primary uses sell similar things if that property owner gets permission and they're good with that? I mean, I think there's, so that's what I'm here tonight for, is just to get some feedback so we can give our consultants some direction and get back to you.
All right, Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just have a question. So, what's the difference between, and do we have ordinances that address mobile businesses, businesses that operate out of their van but go to places? Do we have ordinances that address those that are not food?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Finley, so our code currently doesn't, I think, address those specifically as mobile businesses. They are, they are part of the use matrix and categorized with other uses. So, someone that is, say, doing a food delivery would be categorized with mobile food vending. Someone who's doing like a lawn care service would be categorized as a special trade contractor shop. So, what we've been doing currently is really categorizing people in with the broader use group as opposed to kind of an all-inclusive mobile vending.
So, for example, the people who go to houses and pick up dog do, what would they be categorized as?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Finley, so I think those are some of the questions that, I call this particular code item the Shrek onion. As we peel, we continue to find things just like, that you bring up, that, you know, we really don't classify those. People don't really, we probably don't see a lot of home occupation applications for those. So, to some extent, you have to remember that a lot of our enforcement is really complaint-driven. And so, there's a lot of business, I think, going on like that around the community that we aren't necessarily permitting a certain way.
Then, wouldn't we be not benefiting from any sort of permit fee we might charge them?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Finley, that is correct. Not only a permit fee, but I would also hazard a guess that a lot of those folks aren't actually taking out sales and use tax licenses either.
So, I think I would like to see us address that as well. Because I think there's two different things here. I think there is itinerant vendors, people who just go sit on a piece of property and sell stuff out of the back of their car. And then, we have people in a van that go around the city providing services to our citizens. So, perhaps we need to look into both of those?
Carpet cleaning company, for instance, you know, I mean, they drive around with their big truck and clean carpets. You know, it's a mobile business, but it's permanent.
They have a wrecking ball place.
Yeah, right. That they dispatch out of...
A lot of them don't. A lot of them just have a truck.
I mean, like Zero Res, for instance, or Stanley Steam, or something. They have a brick and mortar headquarters, and they dispatch their trucks. We're plumbers.
Yeah, but there's individual owners, too, that may not, although it could be a home business, considered a home business as well, I imagine. I think in either case, and especially where it concerns itinerant vending, I would like to see that limited to commercial zones rather than residential zones. And as far as a number of days, I don't know. You know, we could look at the rest of these and pick one, but I just lost my page. But I do think it needs to happen in commercial zones, or industrial zones, and not in residential zones. That would just be my first suggestion.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the, again, I'm sorry if I was mean earlier. I feel bad. I love staff. I love staff. I love you all, from the bottom of my heart. And that's not sarcastic. But my thoughts on this are, I think that people, business owners, I think business owners, when they buy a brick and mortar building, we want them to buy and have success downtown, for example. We don't want the mayor to buy the pump house and then go out of business because he's surrounded by a moat of hot dog carts. Or, we don't want a mechanic who, Jiffy Lube, to be surrounded by, you know, mobile oil change facilities. So, I think that, I think the whole intent of the law before of 250 feet away from an existing business was to protect people who came in and bought buildings, and I think that we need to keep doing that. I would be, I don't think it's smart to allow any and all uses for itinerant vendors because I think that would become problematic. Somebody buys that little vacant, the old gas station that's on, what is it, Long's Peak or Ninth and Main with the Peyton Manning picture, you know, buy a vacant piece of land, and I'm good to go on whatever I want. So, whatever we do, I'd want to make sure we're protecting property rights of people who own the building, and two, making sure that we're not allowing a free-for-all on our current zoning regulations. And I think that when you, in the beautiful, beautiful data that was provided, almost every city, both in Colorado and outside of it, except for Greeley, which I can speak, but Greeley's not necessarily an example, but temporary use, I think that the way you fix that is a temporary use on certain things. So, if somebody wanted to come to the city and apply for a windshield chip repair, you make sure it's not near other windshield chip repair facilities. You make sure it's in an appropriate, appropriately zoned area. You give him a specific permit that would allow him or her to engage in that activity. That's what I'd like to see.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yeah, I agree with most of what has already been said. I just don't want to lose the ice cream trucks in residential areas.
Oh, no.
But for the most part, I do think it should be confined to commercial areas that we allow both itinerant trucks and the others. But they do need to be, we do need to preserve that 250-foot limit unless they have permission from the brick and mortar store. I do see, though, that in the future, we have more and more mobile shops, mobile repair and mobile businesses that don't necessarily have a brick, they may be home businesses, as Councilman Finley said, that really just operate out of their truck and their garage. And that's fine, and those people have jobs, and they are supporting themselves and their family, and I don't want to harass them or put on-risk fees on them. I want them to do well. And I would like us to not be overly strict with that sort of stuff. And I also see that certain shopping centers, like the one up the street from Anne Francis, have itinerant, well, yeah, itinerant, people come and sell things on the, in the summertime, they sell melons and they sell whatever. And that's really up to the shopping center owner, it seems to me, to, if they want to allow that, provided it's nothing completely crazy, you know? If they're just selling melons and corn, that's a good thing. So, I like the fact that you explained that Bonnie asked about the difference between those, and you have a designation of special trade contractor, because that covers a lot of the businesses I see that are, that are very useful. Mobile bike repair and plumbing and carpentry and all those things that will come to your house, you know, they've got to come to the house somehow, electricians. So, yeah, that's, those are my opinions on it.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Joni, it says here for discussion purposes, location, private property, public, et cetera. I was wondering, in Prospect, when they do their Monday night eats, those food trucks are around restaurants. How does that affect it when you say it can't be within 250 feet of a competing business?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Peck, so that's a, that's a great question, because that is another type of temporary use where we allow special events, kind of similar to what the clerk's office permits in our city parks. We also have the ability to allow for events such as Prospect Eats, and typically, we have had conversations with all of the business owners, and they've been good with that. Obviously, I think that brings lots of people to Prospect, both for brick and mortar and for the food trucks. So, we've done that through our temporary use rules that allow for special events, and then that there's a little flexibility in those rules. And since they do every Monday night, instead of 14 days a year, we give them 21. So, we've, took a couple of years to work that one out, but we have it down now.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you know, I always thought when we were discussing the food trucks, that 250 feet was too far, you know, because it pretty much eliminated them from downtown, except for special events, you know? I mean, I wouldn't be bothered if that was closed down a little bit. I mean, I would like to maybe consider, perhaps, consider shortening that distance somewhat because I think that's, it almost rules them out entirely when you have, because you can sprinkle restaurants everywhere up and down Main Street, and there isn't any place that's within a 200, you start drawing 250-feet circles around all the restaurants, and there's no place for them to go. So, I always thought that that was too restrictive myself. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, I guess we talk about different classes of businesses. It's going to be kind of hard to know what's coming down the pipe. We're in a disruptive society now. We don't know what the next business is going to be. It could be, you know, tire changing in your driveway, you know, show up and just do it, you know? And that's what people are wanting these days. They don't want to be, they just don't want to be inconvenienced with having to spend 45 minutes in a tire shop waiting for their tires to be changed. So, I think that that's going to be one of the challenges that we are faced with in identifying what classes of businesses we allow to be itinerant. I also believe it's better to know who's operating in the city than who's not. So, we know, we actually know that these people are operating a business, and they have, they have the property, proper licenses and clearances and whatever they need to operate properly, and that they can operate in a safe manner, and that if we do get complaints, we have follow-up information. But I think the challenge is really around code enforcement. Windshield chip repair signs pop up on Friday night, and they go down Sunday night. And we don't even know if they have permission on the target parking lot to do this activity. So, this is, that's the challenge of this. So, if we just say go for it, I think we have to put some teeth behind it at some point.
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Moore agreed, and that's why you'll see Shannon's name on this council comm with me, because code enforcement is taking a look at this. On Saturday, we actually, code enforcement did a sign sweep and took down 100 illegal signs in right-of-way and around town. So, we are doing some enforcement to follow up on what kind of becomes prolific when it gets to spring and summer. So, we're keeping an eye.
Councilmember Santos?
I'm all right with illegal signs. Have no problem with a temporary use permit. Let's see, that's basically a lot, what a lot of the other communities are doing. I would like to see a business and a sales tax license. I'd see both, especially for those that are selling merchandise. That has to happen. I have no problem with a temporary use. The timing, which is what no one has talked about yet. I see like Aurora's got 90 days in renewable. Renewable, they could do another 90 days, or they can, do they continually renew, like for that one chip repair place that's in, you know, if we did 90 days, in Aurora, could they just renew and renew, renew?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Santos, typically, that is the way it works. I'm not specific in Aurora. The nice thing about the renewable is, is if you do have issues or problems with that vendor, you don't have to renew in that particular location, and they can perhaps find a different location that doesn't cause the same impacts or problems. So, there is some benefit to that as a model.
So, 90 days would be, 60, 90 days with renewables, I think I'd be comfortable with. But again, as Councilmember Moore said, it's going to be the enforcement part of, that's going to be, that may catch us. I mean, it's going to have to, you know, I would hope that businesses that come into the city of Longmont, whether you're mobile or brick and mortar, apply for, get their business license, get their sales and, sales tax permit, and, you know, depending on where they're going to set up, you know, in commercial areas, I think is all right. Getting back to the mobile trucks that council first passed, then 250 feet within the central business district, I recall that meeting where we had several of the restaurateurs, not yourself, Mayor, but others that were a little concerned about that. I would have no problem bringing that in, but with consent of the brick and mortar. So, if, you know, I can think of at least three owners of businesses that were here that night, and one that talked offline that said, you know, if I'm selling sandwiches in my, in my shop, and then somebody sets up a hot dog stand, that does, that does me no good. So, there we go back to that old free-market society there. Again, if you, if there's a signature where, you know, somebody can get one of the restaurants or shop there that says, I have no problem, then so be it. But again, I think the 60 to 90 days with a renewal is very important.
Mayor, Council, if I can, I think if you have the temporary use permit, it does make enforcement actually a little bit easier in the sense that what I've seen in other communities is you give them cards that say you're allowed to operate for this date. Makes it easier on code enforcement and the police department, because if you have it, great, you stay open. If you don't have it, then we can respond to it versus, you know, all of the other gymnastics that you can go through if you don't have those pieces and finding out who's where, what licenses do they have, and so on and so forth.
So, if somebody's just doing a service and not selling a product, that's not a taxable event, it's not a tangible asset. So, people that are just doing a service thing, you know, like picking up dog do, they shouldn't have to have a sales tax license to do that. I mean, so...
One second, myself. Right, right. Councilmember Christensen?
I have a question, Joanie. Just because I don't really understand. When you say process and criteria, and you're talking about primary use, does that mean that they have a brick-and-mortar store, and then this is something that goes out from there? Or what does that, what does primary use mean?
So, typically, in zoning, you're looking, is there a primary use of the property and an accessory use of the property? And oftentimes, the accessory is tied to the primary use. Actually, there's legal precedent that you don't actually have to have an establish, or you can have two primary uses. A primary use doesn't have to be accessory to another use, so, but usually, you know, I think you have to think about if it's a vacant parcel where it's not paved, there's no facilities, you know, how are they going to take away trash? You know, are there restrooms close by? I mean, depending on what kind of business, those are the things we would look for, to make sure that someone's just not on a gravel corner with nothing provided, so. And I'm going to let Jim, oh, no, answer the question about the sales tax license.
Mayor Coombs, Members of Council, Jim Golden, Director of Finance. So, we still would license those businesses because they may have use tax for things like supplies, bags, I would suppose, unless they use a newspaper bag, like I do.
All right, thank you. Good point. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And I guess I'd, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't silent, because I love your mind. It's, you're brilliant, but I would disagree with bringing it in, because it's not that, we're not the first community to deal with this question, and bringing in mobile vendors to Main Street downtown would have a negative impact in general on the area, for all kinds of reasons. It would look trashy, but more importantly, as Councilmember Santos pointed out, or could look trashy. But, as Councilmember Santos pointed out, if you've got a sandwich shop and somebody puts a sandwich cart in front of the sandwich shop, you know, your business is going to, is going to hurt. And so, I would, I would, I would probably push back on that.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Also, in our criteria for food vending, it's a yearly permit? So, maybe for a mobile business, not an itinerant vendor, but a mobile business, it should be a year rather than the 90 days or 60 days, but an itinerant vendor could be 90 days. That's what makes more sense to me, because I think that would, you know, we need to encourage people to be entrepreneurs, and I think that would help.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And then, also in the council communication, it says, should we go through planning and zoning? And I would say yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We were able to absorb all that.
It was, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now it's time for final call. Public invited to be heard. Is there anybody from public who'd like to speak at this time?
Mayor Coombs and Councilwoman Sarah Levison, 634 Emory. I just wanted to point out for the record, staff said that there would be tax revenue, property tax revenue, if the property was sold. Actually, that's inaccurate, because when I was on council, and LDDA came to renew their status, they asked council, could we give back the portion of property sales tax that would normally come back to the city in the renewal of the district? And we agreed to do that. So, there will be no property tax, new property tax, coming to the city. I was hoping other council members might remember that. But I do recall that the county decided not to give LDDA their requested amount to keep that increment that they would normally, that they got back in the renewal, because they would get, again, half of what the original was. So, I know the county will get property tax, but the city will see no new property tax, and we won't see any new sales tax either.
They still pay the property tax, but it doesn't come back to the city. It goes to the county and to the DDA.
Because, so, yes, so the property tax and the sales tax actually goes to the DDA.
Right.
They have TIF, so.
Yeah.
Jim, do you want to come down and break all of that? Because I think it's dependent on different pieces, because you have the general improvement district, and then you have the DDA, so.
Mayor Coombs, Members of Council, so the property's not in the general improvement district, so it'll still pay its property taxes. The city doesn't get any of that, that does go to the tax increment district, the DDA. And then, the county gets its share, school district's share pledges there to the DDA.
Okay.
And then, I think part of it is, is we have conversations with the other piece of this, with the DDA and the services that we provide as a city. You know, those are conversations that we'll engage in in the budget process in terms of what those services are and the cost of those services.
Okay, so now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The great thing about democracy is we get a vote, and move on. The irony here is, I'll probably be the one person to vote against it, but earlier, the consultant that spoke regarding that property south of 119, I would like, I don't know, I'm trying to do what you suggested, Councilmember Santos, I would like just to have staff tell us what's going on.
Yeah.
That's pretty much it. So, just, I don't know, I mean, I briefly have spoken with them, but I don't, it would be helpful to know what the ordinance is that would prohibit you from talking to them, and then tell us what's going on, and then have you ask us, do you want us to consider this? So, I guess that's a, yeah, so I want, I want, that's the motion, or I don't know if you need a motion, or if it's just consensus, or you see us shake, move our heads.
Yeah.
Consensus, and we can bring that back to you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It's been some time since I had a business of the week, and I have a really good one this week because of all the tree branches and all the trees that have been broken. My business of the week is 3D Tree Care. They're here in Longmont, Longmont-owned, and their goal is to help you feel at ease from your initial phone call until the completion of the job. Superior customer service. I know we had a big pine tree with a lot of broken branches, and some of them were too tall for my husband to get down this weekend, and so we may have to call the 3D Tree Care, and you may need to as well. I also wanted to ask a question. So, if your branches have already been picked up once, can you get them picked up a second time? Because there was a wind that blew some more down, and now we have more branches. Can we get them picked up again? And what does it cost? I'm sure I'm not the only one that had this issue.
That would be a special pickup. I don't know what the cost is of that. What I do know is that if you have large item pickup, because I was looking into it at $75.
$75?
That was for the large item pickup where they take three items. We will get you the cost of the special.
We have a pretty big pile of limbs.
We can, we can get that information.
You know, you can put them in a pickup truck and haul them over to the tree limb division.
He did that one time, and he would, he estimated it would take six more times to do that, and it would be cheaper to hire or pay the city to come get him, but it would be nice to know what that amount would be.
We can get those fees, and we'll send them.
We should share them with everyone, because I'm sure we're not the only one. Thank you.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Getting consensus from council, like we did before, for Ray Cooper's remark about the fees that were eliminated for the drop zone and the invoices we paid for the mowing service. Can you bring back documentation on that, as far as, do we have documentation that we actually hired Mile High Services to mow? And if so, what portion? And are we actually, as was suggested, double-dipping? Was Mile High Services actually double-dipping? Or is it fraud?
So, we got the email today. Staff is actually going to respond to that email for council and provide you with the information. I know David's working on it now, because I'm seeing some information moving back and forth. So, we were just planning on responding to the entire council regarding that email.
Could we have it brought up in, for the public to hear the answer on next council meeting, just as a, just as an update? Is that possible?
Again, council can choose or direct us to decide to do that, so I would look to the city council to say, provide us direction on that one.
Well, I think when we see a response to the email, wouldn't that provide us with most of the, I mean, I think you, you've got some details there, and you can respond with an intelligent response to that email, and that would provide, you know, the documentation, wouldn't it?
Yeah, because we're going to provide the documentation in the email, and then we would obviously provide that to Mr. Cooper as well.
Okay.
And answer that question, since he presented it to us. To give you a sense of what we found, just as we've been going through this ongoing, David looked at the invoices, and this is some of the information I was getting as the meeting was going. The difference between what we paid in mowing, for mowing in 2015, and what we paid for mowing in the years prior to that is about $9,000. So, our expenses in mowing have gone up since we've said, no, you pay the drop zone fee. And so, that's the level of detail that we're going to provide to the council. Gone down? It's gone down 9,000, so. So, anyway, we will provide you with more information on this, answering those specific questions.
Councilmember Christensen?
Okay, first I have two announcements. Earth Day is coming up, and we have some wonderful young people who have, and who have organized the youth of the, two events, Youth of the Earth Festival, which will be April 16th at the farmer's market from 9:00 to 1:00, I think. Is that correct? There are lots of activities and information, and it should be fun. The second event is the Earth Day Festival, which will be at Silver Creek High School from 6:00 to 9:00 on April 22nd. And there's a movie called Earth, which is a Disney movie, and then there are also lectures on climate change by various local authorities, and many information booths, and that should be fun, too. That's organized by the Silver Creek Leadership Academy and various other people. This is also Equal Pay Day, and I would like to remind people that women are still not getting paid anywhere close to what men are getting paid. White women are getting paid 78 cents on the dollar. African-American women are getting paid 67.5% on the dollar. First Nations women are getting paid 56.3%, and Latina women are getting paid 52.3% on the dollar. This costs a woman about $460,000 of her lifetime. That makes the difference between being able to retire in dignity and being able to retire in poverty, which is the case for a huge proportion of women. So, it's just something to ponder. Thanks.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. As most of you know, I, last week, I was in Chino, Japan. The council was invited. I took them, from the mayor and the chairman of the city council, to participate in the Imbushara Festival, that is every six years, in Chino, Japan. So, you'll notice on your desks that you have a couple of small items from the council in Chino. Mayor has a cake, I'm just wondering if he's going to eat it. They were grateful, they were grateful to have a member of council finally come and participate in that festival. It is very important. It's something that I, I don't think we could do in the United States. It was so, thousands and thousands of people, all participating to bring eight sacred logs and making their way, and eventually making their way to two shrines. Like to thank the mayor of Chino and the chairman of the council. They were great hosts, but also, on my own dime, took my family. And my daughters greatly appreciated, to an extent, some of the food, not so much, but to see what a different country and a different culture and how they celebrate. They, the mayor and the chairman of the council sends their regards. I'd like to thank Councilmember Moore for letting me use his happy coat. I know two other happy coats were used by Sue Bolton and a friend of hers from Councilmember Finley and Mayor Coombs. It is clean. I washed it. But, seven hours of moving a sacred log, it's a seven-ton log. I walked seven miles, and then it's a festival. If you see things on YouTube, that's later on where they're actually riding this down a very steep hill. This one was a little bit more tame. Bringing it to the center of town the next day, they brought it down a smaller hill.
Did you ride the log?
I did not ride the log. They actually had said that it's really not good luck for elected officials to ride the log, although I do know the mayor of Chino at one time did ride the log and was very proud of that. Anyway, they send their regards. It was a very worthwhile trip. Again, keeping that relation with our sister cities, not only in Chino, Japan, but Soodat Guzman, which reminds me, I also will be partially attending the sister cities meeting on Thursday. Vicky and I had commented that we would be willing to host the city representative, and so they could stay with us when they're here this summer. All in all, a very good and worthwhile trip.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just another update, it's been kind of under the weather for the last few weeks, so, one of the things I did bring back from National League of Cities Congressional City Conference, the Board of Directors has formed a steering committee to investigate opioid use, and I would be interested in knowing where our community stands, and, for example, are our first responders caring and trained to use, administer naloxone? Because it's been proven a life-saving technique to people that are experiencing overdoses. So, I think it'd be a good time to have a good, an update. It's been in the news a lot lately. It's been in the local news, down towards, you know, in the Denver metro area, so I don't believe we can hide from this. I think we need to have it out in the open. We need to know what the extent of it is and where it's going to lead us, so, thank you.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. A few, a couple of months ago, we directed staff to analyze jump fees for any skydiving company at the municipal airport, and I was wondering if we could have that in, that analysis and recommendations from staff for fees that we should be doing, especially since we're doing, redoing all the airport standards. If we, if you agree, could we have that analysis back, the first part of May?
Staff is working on that. It's sitting with John Putnam right now.
Okay.
And so, we, we're trying to bring it back as fast as we can. And we'll need to get with John and see what it will look like.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, first off, I would like to thank Councilmember Bagley for running the meeting last, or two weeks ago.
You're very welcome, Mayor. You're most welcome.
He did an excellent job, I hear.
That's all right.
Anyway, that allowed me to attend a health retreat in Aspen. It was, it was a rough week, but someone had to do it. I know at a council retreat, you know, we talked about, you know, revisiting, you know, the marijuana issue here in the city of Longmont, whether we want to, you know, consider medical marijuana, recreational, or both. And so, I think it's, I know that Sean's been working on gathering some information, and, you know, so hopefully in May sometime, we'll, we can report out. I don't think that there's a strong feeling, unless I'm reading people wrong, that we want to necessarily tackle, you know, the grow operations in the city, but, and, you know, I don't know what the answer is. Maybe it's, if we... You know, I've been doing a lot of research, and first off, I never thought that marijuana should have ever been a Schedule I drug, anyway. It's, and I'm glad that a lot of countries are moving away from that, but there's a lot of really good medical benefits. I mean, it's great for arthritis. I twisted my knee doing these box jumps, and some friend gave me this marijuana salve that I rubbed on my knee, and it's like, after two days of hardly being able to walk, it was like the next morning, I was fine again, so.
Saw you smoking on your bike.
So anyway, I just hope that you guys do a good job and bring us back some, you know, reasonable things to consider, and, and do I have consensus that, you know, everybody's kind of on board with wanting to go down this path and get some more information? All right?
No. Saying no, I'm saying, I'm saying no, too.
Okay, well, well, I guess that's four yeses and one no, so it's still kind of, go ahead.
Mayor, I would just mention at the retreat, we did get direction from you guys to bring that back, and so we were planning on the first meeting in, in May. We have assembled a staff task force for this, and so that we will be giving you really kind of high-level data during the first, so that you can decide if you even want to move forward.
Right.
If, if you do, then we'll really start digging into the details and get you some policies and more firm recommendations, but we would have some, will have some recommendations for you if you decide to proceed, and then you can give us more direction at that time. But that will be at the first meeting in May.
Okay.
In addition, I've also added a level of work that they're doing, based on some of the numbers we were getting. I asked them to theoretically look at different options, to give council some.
Okay.
A broader framework to look at, because it, depending on the direction you choose, it could have a significant impact on the cost of administering the activity.
Right.
So they're finishing that up right now.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Christensen.
When you do that, could you give us a comparison of what some of the surrounding cities from Fort Collins to Denver and similar things are doing with their, with their marijuana regulations? Because there are places where I think it has worked okay, and there are other places where it's caused a lot of problems, and we need to learn from their problems if we decide to go forward with this.
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember. Christensen, that's exactly the type of information that we're going to provide you at a high level. So we have dug into a number of jurisdictions, in both cities and counties, and so we'll have that information for you, and, and you can kind of see what other cities have done, the recommendations we received from other cities about what to do and not to do. So we'll have a lot of that data for, we already have a lot of that data, and we'll present it on my first meeting in May.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Along with that topic, in addition to how much revenues, et cetera, along with the bad parts, if we could quantify, I mean, how many, how many new police officers would we need? What's the, what's the economics of it?
The Police Department is part of the task force that we put together to work on this.
Thank you.
All right. City manager, any comments?
Just one comment, Mayor, council. As, as Councilmember Finley mentioned earlier, there are a lot of tree branches that we're picking up, and, and so we are getting some phone calls about where we're not picking them up on the schedule that we've talked about. The volume, based on the snowstorm, has really slowed us down a little bit, and so our public works group with contractors are doing the best that they can. Bob Allen talked to me today, and I think they're going to bring on another contractor to, to try to expedite this. This was really something that we started seeing late last week, and so staff is working on that, but I wanted to let you know that we know about it. We're trying to do what we can to, to stay on schedule. If you get any of those questions, let us know, and, and we will respond to your constituents.
All right. City attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.